All right, let's call this meeting to order.
Brooks.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Holmberg.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Lund.
Here.
Approval of minutes.
Move to approve.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Adoption of agenda.
Move to adopt.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
All right, public hearings. Public hearing on an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance fifty-four ninety-four of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri regarding marijuana-related uses.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, in January, the council adopted an ordinance that established zoning regulations for marijuana, medical marijuana uses in the city of Warrensburg. And that was known as ordinance fifty-four ninety-four. That contains both definitions, adding it to the table of uses and establishing what zoning districts those uses can be in, parking requirements for that, and then the distance and location requirements, distances from other uses within the city, certain other uses. The state has now finalized their rulemaking concerning medical marijuana uses. Those went into effect in early June, and as we discussed at your last meeting, there were a few changes from what we saw in the draft regulations. That included the way that they're measuring the one thousand feet, the method that the state established for measuring the one thousand feet from schools, churches, and daycares is not a straight line, but rather the shortest path of travel a pedestrian can legally travel by foot. And so it was necessary to amend our ordinances locally to go from a straight line method of measurement to a measurement that matches the state's. So the first part of your staff report talks about that method of measuring. We talked about that in quite a bit of depth a couple of meetings back. I've included in the packet the illustrations of how the state is measuring and their language, as well as how that may be used in a real-world application that we discussed last time between the location of the Glasscock Shopping Center, the front door of Glasscock, end cap space to the Lutheran Church there on South, North and Quayre. So that's in your packet. And then also, as we discussed before, the four, there were four medical marijuana land uses in Amendment Two that the voters approved, and the state has added a fifth one for medical marijuana transportation facilities. So this ordinance proposed this evening adds that fifth definition, and then puts that use in the table of uses and provides a parking requirement for it, and then has the same distance and setback requirements that the other four uses have. But the state picked to get a different way to measure for it, and so it has its own measurement section. You have in your packet both a clean copy of the ordinance that fully repeals the original ordinance and restates it in its entirety with the new language that staff is proposing this evening. And then you have a redline copy that is the full proposed ordinance this evening, and it shows your existing ordinance and your new ordinance all on the same document. New language is in red bold, and language that would need to be deleted is in red strikethrough. So you can see all that in one place, what's being deleted and what's being added, mostly we're adding. We'd be happy to answer any questions if you have it.
Questions from Barb? Lots of charts and diagrams at the planning and zoning meeting, kind of breaking down the, how to draw the line.
I do have a question probably for attorney on the nuisance of it. I know I spoke something of it last meeting about apartments, and it doesn't have anything in there, just talking out loud on the future when tenants are, I see it's like for childcare if there's something next door or they smell it from someone smoking it or...
So, so this focuses on the supply chain side of the equation. So people that were licensed as users would still be subject to our general regulations for nuisances, which include odor and smoke. So someone that was a tobacco user, for example, would not be able to do that in a way that, that caused seepage of odor or smoke into neighboring property. And the same would be true of, of users of medical marijuana. So existing ordinances would, would cover that.
So my, our leases at our office should stay the same when it says no smoking in there? Should I put cigarette smoke in marijuana or just leave it no smoking and just leave it the way it reads?
I mean, in terms of enforcement, from what the neighbors' rights are under ordinances, it would be the same regulations would apply to both. But in terms of what the specific contractual rules and regulations are, that, that'd be something that the individual property owners would have to decide. But the ordinances would apply uniformly as to both.
Would, would there be any necessary necessity to update the nuisance ordinances to reflect both?
No, because they don't specifically call out tobacco use, for example. You could, you could create smoke by smoking tobacco, by burning, used by any number of things, and it would all be covered the same, the same general category.
Any other questions for Barb or Doug? And I see that, you know, the public hearing, nobody signed up to speak on behalf. Did anybody that came in late wish to speak on behalf of the medical marijuana issue? Please feel free to come forward and share what you'd like to share. Please state your name once you get to the microphone, please.
Ms. Mayor, Council, I'm Rhonda Davis. I'm a nurse here in the area, public health nurse. My concern is, if this doesn't affect me because I do not live in Warrensburg, however, I do work in Warrensburg, and I'm concerned about the location. Now, I did know, notice when the new ordinance that was drafted that it still reflect a thousand feet from churches, daycares, and what, and what have you. I just wanted to know if that's still applicable in the new ordinance?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So this, this is all the same setbacks, the, they just, we're mirroring the state's language in as far as how to draw the line between the two. If we were doing the straight line, they want us to do a zigzag line.
Okay. Will it still keep this, the location at a different location? Or will it still remain at Red Cross?
Red, Red Cross does not conform to that.
By the new...
Red Cross is... Red Cross is not conform.
It does not conform, no. That was my only concern. Thank you.
Any others that wanted to speak on behalf of the medical marijuana issue? Any questions for Barb or Doug? All right, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing and move on to first and second reading of ordinances. An ordinance suspending the provisions of Section three dash fourteen for certain special events, August second, two thousand nineteen pursuant to Section three dash four B of the Code of Ordinances. Chief Lockhart.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council of Warrensburg, Main Street has outlined their plan for the outdoor summer concert on Pine Street. It'll be August second. In conjunction with that, they are asking for a suspension of the open container ordinance between the hours of six P M. and eleven thirty P M. They will be providing volunteers who will monitor pedestrian traffic in and out of the barricaded area to ensure that people are complying with the liquor laws and that they are over twenty-one if they have alcohol. The restaurants will be serving the alcohol, so they'll have to get their catering licenses to be able to serve on the street. We've done this several years now, and so we recommend the approval. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I move to approve.
I move to, move to go second reading by title.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
This is an ordinance suspending the provisions of Section three dash fourteen for certain special events, August seventh, two thousand nineteen pursuant to Section three dash fourteen B of the Code of Ordinances. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Moving on to an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance fifty-four ninety-four of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri regarding medical marijuana-related uses. Barb?
If nothing additional, we have any answer questions?
All right, this is what we just had a public hearing on. Any discussion prior to entertaining a pass to second reading?
Move past second reading.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Yes.
This is an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance fifty-four ninety-four of the city of Warrensburg regarding marijuana-related uses. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Moving on to an ordinance approving and accepting the final plat of Cahill lots one eighty-eight through one ninety-four, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located on the north side of Veterans Road.
This is the fifth, fifth phase of Cahill. They have submitted the final plat. This is about a ten point four acre area. It includes seven new single-family lots, and it takes tract O, which was in the last phase. And instead of having a dedicated tract, it will replat that land into lots one ninety-four and one ninety-three. So they will, that land physically will still be an easement for storm drainage and utility easement, but it will be in their backyard, in their lots, as opposed to a separate tract of land. This takes the street that was renamed earlier this year to Estates Drive. It shows that as the street name, and it brings that up where it was stubbed out in the last phase, brings that up and ends in a cul-de-sac. That has these lots spreading on it. There is a new street, Owen Lane, that will be stubbed out to the west for future development of that area to the west. This plat does, is the second plat that departs from the preliminary plat that was approved. Once Veterans Drive was in and open, they had a little more freedom in the layout and the design in their two entrances and exits out of the subdivisions. So they have changed, this is part of that change. You saw that also in base four. Planning and zoning considered this at their meeting last week and recommended approval with seven conditions. Those are written into the ordinance that you have in front of you. Staff would recommend approval of the ordinance. We happy to answer any questions.
Move, that said, Bill, be passed to second reading. Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving and accepting the final plat of Cahill lots one eighty-eight to one ninety-four, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located on the north side of Veterans Road. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Moving on to an ordinance approving and accepting the minor plat of Culver's Edition, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located at nine oh six and nine oh six A, North Simpson Drive.
This property is in the northeast corner of Maguire Street and Simpson Drive. Currently has a structure on this lot. That's just one lot that's being replatted. This was the property that the Myers family owns. Jim Myers had that building, and he did his artwork there, and has some of it still outside the structure. That's the existing building that's called out on the plat. This is taking the existing lot and splitting it into two lots. There's a lot one and a lot two. Lot two would be nine oh six A, North Simpson Drive. It's in the northeast corner of the original parcel. This is, lot has never been previously platted. It's currently a meet and bounce lot. This plat does trigger right-of-way improvements to the south side of Simpson Drive. That would include widening curb gutter, storm drainage, and sidewalk to be built at the time the lot is developed, and that is shown on the plat. Well, the plat states that there will be no driveways allowed onto Maguire Street or to the Highway fifty right-of-way. That's not anticipated, but we would, would not allow it if it was requested. Planning and zoning commission discussed this at the meeting last week. There was a significant amount of discussion concerning Simpson Drive right-of-way as it crosses lot two of the plat, and whether or not the city could require that right-of-way, additional right-of-way for Simpson Drive to be dedicated at this time to extend the street one hundred and thirty feet further to the east. Right now, it terminates where this lot starts there to the east, and that is used as part of the parking lot for Economy Lumber. That lot, that right-of-way is not shown as right-of-way for a future street on the major street plan. So under the subdivision rights, the city cannot require them to dedicate that. Can't exact it from the... As a result of that discussion, Planning and Zoning Commission ultimately recommended an approval of the plat with the six conditions that staff had recommended, and added a seventh condition that planning staff meet with the Myers and see what opportunities there are to extend Simpson Drive to Hawthorne Boulevard in the future and report back to the Planning and Zoning Commission in August. So they approved the plat with an additional condition for discussion purposes. So that has been drafted into the ordinance that you have in front of you, and staff would be happy to answer any questions.
I would prefer to remove the seventh condition that was added by Planning and Zoning. There's Simpson Drive. I believe that decision was made by the community back when MoDOT was making those improvements and tried to work with the property owner at that time to put in a frontage road. And at that time, the property owner was not cooperative, and thus necessitated the creation of Cooper Street. And I think it would be a bit redundant to have Cooper Street and a frontage road through there. I think that's something that we can talk about as that property develops. If the developers feel that aids that, and they want to put that as part of their plans, we can do that. But as far as the city requiring it, I think it complicates it and makes it more difficult to develop that area. You put a frontage road in there, you're going to have to have additional setbacks in there. So you're going to shrink the developable land in that area in the vicinity. And I think the best, as our plan currently stays, the best way to address that is to connect Simpson back into the north, back into Cooper Street, and allow Cooper Street to be the east-west connector through that area as opposed to having Cooper Street and a frontage road along Highway fifty. So I would request and recommend to the council that, that seventh condition, that Planning and Zoning Commission approve not be required.
So other than shrinking the size of the lot, what would be the other part of if we did keep it in as council?
You would, you would have to dedicate the space for the actual road, so the actual physical land reduction, and you would have an additional setback there that you're measuring from. So your buildable space on the, on the actual land is shrunk even further, which makes it, and it's, it'll make it even more difficult to develop in that area.
And that seventh condition from planning and zoning, it has no teeth. It is basically asking them, asking staff to reach out and start a dialogue.
Yes, but if city staff reaches out and begins that dialogue, then the expectation is that the city wants the frontage road. And at this point, our plan doesn't call for that, and I don't think that's the best request. I don't think that's good development planning in that area.
So there won't be a setback?
The setback would be measured from the state right-of-way for Highway fifty and from Cooper Boulevard. You put a frontage road in there between Cooper Boulevard and Highway fifty, and then you start measuring the setbacks from, from that frontage road, and basically anything between the frontage road and Highway fifty is going to be undeveloped.
I would be in favor of that as, as suggested.
So the question is, do we want to eliminate?
Number seven.
Number seven. I'm fine with eliminating seven.
You're making a motion?
We've entered a motion to second reading.
Yes, then I will make a mo- motion to eliminate, uh, re- is there a requirement?
Number seven.
Number seven?
Yep. Pass to second reading.
As, and pass to second reading.
Okay, got it.
You vote on your amendment first, and then you can pass the amended bill to second reading.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Not pass, not pass the amended ordinance to second reading.
I move to pass the amended bill to second reading.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving and accepting the minor plat of Culver's Edition, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located at nine oh six and nine oh six A, North Simpson Drive. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
All right, moving on to other business. Next on the docket, discussion on Holiday Inn Construction Neighborhood Concerns requested by Mr. David Ewing.
I want to thank my neighbors that are here, and I want to thank Mr. Holmberg who, uh, Holmberg who came out to the property itself. But I'm going to start out talking about a mistake. I made a mistake. My mistake was, last time I was here, I said that I wrote to the owner of the hotel, and I actually heard when I got the envelope that the delivery was denied. But when I got to checking with our reporter over here and I double-checked my facts, it was not denied. It was undeliverable. Now, what it says on this is I tried to deliver it to the address that was given to me, to which it was not there, and it was delivered to the next change of address, which was changed to the next address, and finally, delivery was denied. I sent this on March sixteenth and got it back April fifteenth or something like that. Definitely, no. I wanted to point that out because I made a big deal out of this. Because when somebody, when you try and communicate with somebody and they don't communicate back, I said basically, that's very rude, you can't do that. You know, obviously, I made a mistake, and I feel very embarrassed in a way to tell you about my mistake because I did make a big deal about it. But that's the problem about mistakes. When there's a mistake, you're expected to own up to it, and no matter how humbling or what it costs you, you're supposed to make good. So I'm trying to make good on a mistake I had, which is why I'm trying to bring forward to this council mistakes that are made about this hotel. My name is David Ewing. I live directly behind the hotel. You've met me before. And I want to basically talk about four mistakes. The first three are communicating and understanding what we understood was supposed to be the conditions concerning the hotel. Second, the present berm and some conditions are, 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 I'm trying to think of the word, are not correct, are not right, are causing problems. And the third one was the passage of the current dyke berm system was done improperly. And I'll get to the fourth one in just a little bit. You'd think this would get easier after I've met with you so many times, but it isn't. But I'd like you to look in your packets and look at the architect plan that we had.
That was over in the email that I sent out this morning. I didn't get any time to put them in the packet. Packet's went out Wednesday last week. I reviewed these documents yesterday, so they're forwarded to you via email this morning.
I apologize.
No, it's all right. Just trying to ask, would I, council be able to find what you're asking on a lookout?
You want me to just look at which of the three? Well, specifically. No, I have three attachments. There's three attachments. Okay. Okay, got it.
The one I'm looking at now should look something like this. This is the architect's plans that was sent to us. Now, I, I need to remind you that this was a negotiated compromise. The hotel didn't get everything it wanted. We didn't get everything. We, the neighborhood, didn't get what we wanted. It was a compromise that took place over here. I want you to notice that on the four-story hotel, where the berm is located, the berm is located thirty feet from the back parking lot. You'll see a little car there, and you'll see the car that's in the parking lane of the fire lane. And you can see they wanted the berm to be ten feet high. That berm was supposed to go across the entire property. When you look at the next plan, which is a foot plan, you will see the trees and the berm located as per item. And I got these plans directly from the architect because I write, Mr. Titerman was the architect. And then the last one that you see for plans, the berm is not there, but you'll see a buffer line that's attached. As you look into the August two thousand and sixteen meeting notes, I don't know if you have those. If not, I have a copy that you can look at here. I would like to point out your attention to item E. All lighting on the backside of the hotel will have shields to keep the lighting within the paved lot area and zero lighting in the sixty-foot buffer zone. Like you look at J. An additional thirty feet with a ten-foot high beam berm planted with tree, planted with pine trees, sustainable ground cover, and a six-foot high fence approximately sixty feet off the neighbor's property line. B underneath three talks about the landscape, about talking about the trees about being ninety percent opacity. C talks about the thirty feet being the required buffer and setback. And this was the plan approved on August two thousand and sixteen. This is what my neighbors understood was the plan to go across to take place. In fact, not only did we understand that to be the plan, but as we went through a discussion later and talked about, should we have a third, a three-story hotel or a four-story hotel? My wife and I wanted only the three-story hotel, and my neighbor said, we're going for the four. We think the berm will do the job.
True, true.
Okay. And otherwise, they would have voted differently if they'd known the berm was going to come out. So here we have a communication, understanding of what was supposed to take place in terms of landscaping, lighting, and that, we've already discussed why that was supposed to be. It was supposed to actually keep the sound, the lighting, the security, the health, all those things, and protect the neighborhood all around those particular items. So that was our mistake number one. Something didn't get communicated. Something didn't get understood. Number two is the existing berm that we see there. If you go by the property, why it is inadequate and why it's going to cause problems. I'd like you to look at the video, and Randy's going to help me pause it from time to time.
Chipping up the hill, and you'll see that you have to get past that box in front of us before the berm is even ten feet high. But isn't really the berm. Looks like it's still part of the hill up.
Pause. And what I mean by the box is the container. And you have to be in that container. It's about fifty feet from, from the end of the property there, and there is a natural hill there. Now, I want you to also notice that the berm is not located where we intended it to be. It was supposed to be right on that fire lane. So, and there's plenty of room to put it there. That's not the problem. It could have been there. Okay, thank you.
Oh, as this pans down, you can see it quickly gets very little. Right now, this is about a hundred and fifty feet of the four hundred feet that's possible. This is the edge of my property. You'll see that the berm there is not even just high.
Pause. I am standing right at the curb there. I'm on the street, basically, and I'm pointing the camera straight. And this berm is coming right here, and this is halfway my property. And this is ba- basically where the berm ends. So I'm a hundred and fifty feet from the east end of the property.
I swing down towards the Davises. And of course, I see lots of trees, but you're going to see right through all those when those leaves drop up there. And you notice that there is no berm. Now, I'm going behind David and Valerie's house. Berm disappears altogether, and there's that three-foot mound at the very end. So for about two hundred and fifty of the three hundred, four hundred feet, there is no berm.
I'm going to let this run since it's basically a still picture. Okay, can you pause it just a moment there, Randy? Now, yeah, you can, you can see all that lot. That is the lot on the west side. That's from my property that at least has part of a berm there. This isn't from the Davises. It's certainly not from David and Valerie's place, where they even have fewer trees to take place. So remember, when the winter comes, or five months of the year, the greenery won't be there. And we've already got a sound problem because if you stand out in that parking lot and you have a, a normal conversation, I will hear everything you say. That's the way the, the noise echoes out. We hear the highway and everything else. So can you imagine a twenty-four-hour hotel where people are coming in, slamming the doors, getting the luggage out, doing the lights and everything? It's going to be unacceptable. Yeah, my students wish I was quiet like this, too.
This is the ground we can see, and I'm standing with the, actually below the bottom of the hotel.
I'm actually standing in the ditch a little bit.
Valerie's house over there, and David's. You know, that, that berm wasn't left, it's not even three feet.
You know, that berm wasn't left. It's not even three feet tall. It slopes down. I'm not sure if you can see this, but we have standing water now. I don't know if you can see the standing water. We've never had standing water up there. We have an insect problem taking place. We have something that's gonna tip. Part of that's because the berm has rotated all the rain, which will take place over there. And we now have a difficulty in having water drain off our properties, which we never had before. And, go ahead with the other one. I was looking back at the Davises here. The water coming off the berm basically goes right into our yards. Drain that's starting right now not only takes care of the water from our yards, which it was designed to do, but also is supposed to take care of the hotel. Randy, thank you. Now, that's not true. It doesn't drain all the hotel. It drains part of the hotel, which was never intended to do. What it was intended to do was on the berm, was to drain the water from our properties, from our neighborhood and that side of the berm. And we've got two drains that are supposed to take place of that. And it was there so there would be a buffer of trees that would do the sound as well, but also help with the erosion and the eventual erosion berm. Just look anything up on Google about what happens when you put berm right next to a drainage ditch and what happens eventually to that drainage ditch. It restricts water flow. And the Davises will tell you that it's pulling water right behind, this is right behind their property. And so, what would you say, a small pond, small lake? And, I'm sorry, David's back there in the back there. He has the corner lot. Davis has the lot right to our west. And then over here, we have Kurt who has the property just to our east. But the four of us or the four properties got together to do that. I'm standing even with the bottom of the hotel. It's almost two foot now. Look at the storm drain at the very end. Most of the water running into it that seem to be functioning. Okay, I need you to back up a little bit. I don't know if you can do, probably can't do that. I don't know if you saw that, but you saw we have the drain at the end. It's not functioning over there. We have the berm that's hitting right next to the property line. I'm looking at Mr. Hannah in particular because we know that there are certain restrictions that you can have about redirecting water onto other people's properties. And if the compactification of that berm, and it was compacted because they drove bulldozers all over that, but we know that if twenty or twenty to forty percent of the root system of a tree is compacted, that it will cause the death of the tree. Now, we already have so few trees right there on our property anyway. So we have two concerns about water. Of course, you saw the stagnant water that was there and the trees that take place. Now, it's interesting. I only put this here and that may not be the correct wording. I was, Ms. Carol was trying to help me a little bit there. But usually, when the P and T looks at planning and zoning, looks, P and T, promotion and tenure, planning and zoning looks at something, they usually say something like, "We don't think there will be any problems. We don't think there'll be any problems with drainage, relationship to buildings, landscaping, buffering, lighting, and all the other conditions." What we're trying to say, the second mistake, second major mistake is this addition, this present condition is inappropriate. It doesn't help drain the water. It doesn't have the height that was supposed to be, that we agreed upon. It doesn't keep the sounds. It certainly won't for the Davises and for the Griswolds, sorry, back there to take place. On top of that, we are concerned about other things that are gonna happen that haven't been developed yet. That means the fence, the trees. I mean, you can't plant trees on top of a drain. The trees are supposed to be on a berm. If there's no berm, these are trees. Are we gonna still have a blank spot there? It doesn't really protect us. Because one of the things that we've gotta have is those things that occur. So we have a mistake about what's there. And if you take the time to walk it, you will see what I mean. And I'm hoping Mr. Holberg saw part of that. The third mistake that I want to address is when we did the final meeting to approve the plaque for the hotel. I don't believe changes were appropriately addressed. Mr. Jacobs was there. Ms. Allen was there. We discussed where the fence was gonna be. Was it gonna be in front of the berm or in the back of the berm? That was one of the items. Second item we discussed was the level of the hotel. The hotel originally, the floor is supposed to be two feet lower. The hotel people said, "Oh, we can't do that because they're such and such a condition." I don't remember what that was. And our people.
They said if they wouldn't be compliant with the villagers.
Oh, yeah.
They said there was an ADA issue and they also said it potentially could flood the bottom floor because they'd be dropping it below the flood lines.
And then our people came by and said, "No, that's not gonna be the case." But if you recall, they, you passed it as was. You didn't say they had to go down their two feet or three feet. That was supposed to be taking place. But during that time, if you listen to the tapes, there's gonna be three things that occurred. One was, we never discussed the berm. Not once did the changes in the berm were ever discussed. If it was discussed, then it wasn't notified or brought to our attention, certainly not to the neighborhood that was here. If we had known that that was gonna be changed and we were notified, we would have come and protested and at least brought our concerns to the table. Why can you make a major change? And it is a major change. It isn't like a trivial thing like putting the fence in front of the berm or back of the berm. This is a major change. You can see by that particular picture that occurred. Second, you will hear me, if you hear the tapes of that lesson, when we talked about the hotel changing the levels, you might hear me and not hear me in the back because I had to shout. I'm sorry. It just says, "Okay, so you're gonna raise the berm two feet, too." I mean, if you raise the level, it should be ten feet up from wherever you start the hotel. But the other thing that you're gonna hear on the mic for sure is when I had made a remark that we were concerned that what other surprises are gonna take place? That is this gonna happen, that what we're gonna do is have somebody do something and apologize for it later. This is something that's happened. Now, I've talked about three mistakes. One mistake is that somehow what was understood and communicated about what was negotiated didn't get across. Two, the present dike berm and possible lighting and other concerns are not adequate. They are a concern. And three, this major change and some other things that may have happened were not properly introduced or passed or discussed by the city council. And I said it's gonna bring four mistakes up. The fourth mistake is a concern of mine because it's an attitude. Now, I'm hoping the attitude of this council isn't the same as some of the attitude in the past. What I mean by the attitude is when I was approached by one council member before and said, "We gotta have visitors. We have to attract visitors." That's important. And if it inconveniences some of our citizens, it's not a big deal. That's not a direct quote. But what I get from that comment is you're saying that I don't have value as a citizen. Somebody who pays taxes, somebody who participates in this community, somebody who helps run the food center, all those things that make a town a town. Somebody else approached me and said, "Well, we need to have businesses here, no matter what the cost to a few of its citizens." Now, if you were in my place, how would that make you feel? And the third one, and this was directed, Ms. Davis can verify that because she was the one that heard the comment, was somebody came up to her and said, "Well, if you don't like it, you can move."
That was the former mayor. And I believe it was actually in the paper, too, where he made up a statement similar to that.
I think all three of those statements belong to the same person. And that person's not on our council anymore.
Yeah, it's not you.
I understand, yes.
I mean, my point of view is it's real hard for me to trust anything in this town. And we're at the point, hey, we should maybe think about moving. Our kids are leaving. Staying in Orangeburg is not on our radar right now. It really isn't because all the stuff that's gone through, right down to Mrs. Ewing having to run out there and tell them, "Hey, you can't cut those trees down. That's in the protected area. You're not supposed to cut the trees down." Or the lighthouse lights. Or me having to call constantly. I have to call City Hall and say, "Hey, could they run a bush hog through there so we can see at the stop sign?" You know, this whole thing with this hotel, you've basically said money coming in is more important than me. I understand I'm a small business owner. I do a lot for the community. More than ten percent of my sales go back into the community. We do different fundraisers. I try to help out. I don't feel like I'm appreciated. It's real hard for me to have that let's shop low mentality when I was basically told, "If you don't like it, move." Well, where would you move to if you were in my shoes? I'm sorry for interrupting you, Dr. Ewing.
Oh, no, it's great. So you can see we're very sensitive. This is very anxiety ridden. We've had to work on this a long time for different things. The thing is, is that this berm thing was a surprise. I mean, Mr. Coleman can tell you that we called him out and said, "Hey, this isn't what was on the plan. This is a complete surprise for us." And there's other mistakes that took place. We should have investigated that. But you know what? When it comes to an attitude, what I'm really trying to get at is I'm hoping that you have the attitude to have a stiff backbone, to do what needs to be done. When there's a mistake, you have to own up to it. It has to be corrected. I don't care who made the mistake. I don't really care if someone gets fired over this. I don't care if it's gonna cost forty, fifty thousand to get the dirt back in there. The thing is, this was supposed to be done and it's supposed to be done correctly. It is for our benefit as citizens because you know what? When it comes to the people in this community, you are about our last protection. It's up to you to protect the people that's in here so that we are concerned about our health, concerned about our security, concerned about all those pollution of noise and sound and stuff to make living comfortable. And also the privacy of having a backyard that we can feel comfortable in, that we can relax in, so we can have a home. Because we do not own houses on that neighborhood. We own homes. Four mistakes. Do you have questions of us or my neighbors?
I don't.
I have one.
Go ahead.
So I did go out and so just glancing at this drawing and what I saw, it appears like there's an area that there is no berm. And so, is that, is it to the plan? The current berm, is that all to?
The current berm is to the plan that was adopted on March twenty-seventh, March twenty-seventeen. When you, when the city council, they came back for a second round of hearings, they wanted to amend their conditional use permit. So there were public hearings held, both the planning commission and the city council. That's the meeting that was, he referenced for the discussion of the fence location and the height of the hotel.
Yeah, and I think maybe I'm wrong.
And there were plan sheets attached to that staff report and to that ordinance. And so what that ordinance from March twenty-seventeen states is that section three comma two, L of ordinance five-two-five-four is amended to read as follow. Site grading is allowed consistent with attachment A, which is the grading plan dated February twenty-third, twenty-seventeen. The berm matches that grading plan. That is what staff approved with the building permit. That's what they've built. It does show that it tapers down to allow water to pass through at that opening. And then it goes back up towards the street. And it shows the height there at roughly four feet in height.
Let me address. One is, we wouldn't have to contour it at all if the berm had placed where it was supposed to be placed in the first deal. Second, even though it's on the plaque, was it ever brought up? The answer is no. We were at every single meeting. I'm sorry that I did not read a contour map. I'm sorry it wasn't brought up to my attention. I mean, I just got home from three months of being in the hospital with my son who had another brain, a brain stroke, another brain operation. I mean, you gotta give us some leeway because I'm just an ordinary citizen. And certainly, these people weren't notified that, hey, that was amended as well. I mean, it's a negotiated contract. It is not between you and the hotel. It's between us and the hotel and you. You are the middle person.
So on the, the conditions that you're talking about, I was looking through this. Is there a signed contracts, these agreed-upon terms, or is there something that I'm missing?
We assumed when we came in here for that second meeting and we said, okay, we'll let them build a four-story building on a lap that is zone two-story with they put a ten-foot berm all the way across.
Because I see, well, if I'm reading this right, on the, what is it, architectural plan, it does look like there's supposed to be a berm on there, but that was later amended. Is that what I'm understanding?
As I recall it, this came forward to the council. The neighborhood had concerns. Council encouraged and the architect was here and they agreed to sit down with the neighborhood and have a conversation and work some things out. They went and did that. They brought it back. And then in March of two thousand and seventeen, the developer came back and said, "Some of this stuff isn't working," and asked the council to remove some of those requirements. And the council voted to do so. And if I recall correctly at that meeting, I think I spoke out publicly saying that it went against what was negotiated between the architect and the neighborhood in that not allowing those, removing those restrictions went against what was agreed to with the neighborhood and the council approved it anyway. So where we're at today is what is built there is what is built in accordance with what the council approved at that March meeting. And I'll have to defer to Doug, but I don't know if we're having a legal recourse to go and change the rules now.
Not once that conditional use permit is issued, that creates a property right.
And this is what I was trying to avoid when I made the comment, that this goes against what was negotiated between the neighborhood. And all we can require is what the code requires as far as building standards. And anything that goes above and beyond that would be, the city's not really able to require that.
I know he spoke against that. I also know I spoke against it and I know I voted no for it, for changing that conditional use permit. So, I mean, so I imagine.
So.
I live back there, too. I mean, I live on Cheating, so, you know.
Sorry, I wasn't here on the board at the time, so I'm trying.
You're relieved. We don't have an attitude problem with you.
Well, thank you. That's my one pass. Okay. But I'm just trying to get a grasp for, you know, options, I guess. It sounds like because of the current plan, there are negative ramifications on your property according to you.
And those ramifications are possible problems with drainage, possible problems with trees dying, possible problems that we'll be able to see the parking lot at least.
Right.
Privacy and.
So it sounds like the city doesn't have the tools to take, litigate this because we're bound by different rules than independent or individual citizens is what it sounds like. So it sounds like it's outside of our scope.
The council approved the conditional use permit with certain requirements in place. Just like you, Dick, and I, when there was six conditions on the Culvers plaque. The council went through that same process regarding the hotel. And there are certain things that council agreed to require and certain things they required not to do. And staff issued the conditional use permit based off of that. And once that's issued, they have a property right to it. And we no longer have a lot of recourse to come back and change the rules later.
And I know I, right after that last meeting you were here at, I drove back there into that parking lot and then drove the street there. And I will say that those little lights that are, you know, those little three-foot lights, those things are ridiculously bright.
Yeah, they shine out.
Yeah, the little light houses, they were way too bright. I mean, yeah, and I did, yes. And afterward, after that next day, I did mention it that, you know, I don't know if we can do something about those, but those were, but those are ridiculously bright, you know.
You know, the whole thing is ridiculous. I mean, to have something that's passed but not discussed, something that's major up there. There's gotta be some plan that's different in the future, especially when it comes to take place over there. There's gotta be something. I mean, we have a paper trail that says basically, "This is what we agreed to." And all of a sudden, somebody goes ahead and changes it and you guys approve it and you're going, "Oh, I don't have anything. I can't do anything about it now." You don't have to live with it. I mean, let's put it this way. Businesses can relocate. Businesses may cost them money. But you know what? They're gonna make it up for profit. They will eventually pay it off. I will not pay off the deficit to my house that this is affecting my property. I've attended every meeting. I've done everything I can and yet, these things happen. What else can we do? Trying to do the legal process. What else can we do? Trying to do the legal process. Trying to go through the, the rings and the rungs and everything it's supposed to do. Trying to check with the offices often as possible. Wish you weren't so helpless.
So, well, that's the, I'm gonna ask you again on it. We pretty much are bound by what the conditional use is, so we really don't have anything we can do with these folks, cause I'll be honest with you, I looked at it, and it doesn't feel good. I mean, I see their point. We can hold them accountable to the March eighth, two thousand seventeen drawing, and hold them accountable to that, but beyond that.
Are there any trees on that drawing?
It doesn't, it, the quality's zooming in, I cannot, it's a little different layout than the other one. It's not, it doesn't have to include the landscaping on it, it just has the,
Maybe that's.
Uh, but it does have the topographical information, which the other one does not.
Well, maybe that's something we can work on, because according to my, my information here, um, there were supposed to be almost ninety trees planted in there. It was supposed to be all the way across. The fence is supposed to be all the way across.
I think the, my recommendation, my personal opinion, is to look at, you know, rather than looking back at the previous one from sixteen, really dissect the information from that seventeen meeting, and because I think that's all we can hold them accountable to, so, really digging in on that to make sure that they're building it as per that design is gonna be the best course of action, I think.
I think there's a couple of actions that could take place also. I think a letter from the city council asking the owner if she would try to be a good neighbor. What's it gonna hurt? Obviously, I've tried. Say we're concerned about that, being a good neighbor, sort of thing. The second thing is, quite honestly, she should be aware that if you approve and pass, and pass over to this owner, that the owner should be aware that there's possible problems in the future that could be in court concerning, you know, the, the drainage and the trees and everything. That's only fair. I'm welcome to any suggestions that would help relieve this problem.
And that might be your guys' recourse, is sending a notification from an attorney. These are future issues that you will be addressing.
You know, and I'm not gonna go away, you know, I've been doing this thing. I looked up my first letter when I came up here, it's two thousand and four, so, I'm persistent. Especially when there's something that's been wrong. It's a mistake. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Sorry, do you have something?
Just as a citizen and not living in this direct area, it seems like issues, communication. Is that what you're really asking for, the city council, since they spoke directly to the owner, that bringing owner back to the table? Seems like this is what they're asking for, not necessarily for you to make legal decisions, but to bring the owner to the table. Considering.
She's not gonna fix it down. The plans already been approved last year by the city council. So, we're gonna build within that, but then we not get notified.
From what I understand, if they agree to something which is more strict than the law, they've got bind, they're bound by whichever stricter, is that true? Mr. Attorney, that if they have agreed to something?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Excuse me?
I'm not sure I understand.
Okay, well, the whole thing is, it seems like, um, communication has not been successful with the owner, and I think that seems like, as a citizen, I'd like to see the city council be able to bring these people to the table. You've identified these as mistakes. Who's, who's an ordinary citizen to judge a mistake? As an ordinary citizen, I'd hate to see one of my neighbors, basically pushed aside in the name of bringing more business here.
Thank you, sir. Well, we'll look into that and see which plan we're bound to, based on the conditional use, the amended conditional use, and, and, uh, that's the teeth that the city has to hold them accountable to, and, and, uh, we'll do our best to, to hold them to that. Yes, sir.
Instead of the city making decisions on this, I'm just saying, wouldn't it be nice to get the owner to reply?
Thank you.
Moving on to resolution of support for Green Ridge Estates, LIHTC application. A resolution of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, supporting and encouraging the efforts by HRM Services to redevelop fifty-six, eight, fifty-six units of family, affordable housing to a unit to be known as Green Ridge Estates.
Um, some of you may be familiar with the process, um, that the state has for, through the Missouri Housing Development Commission for their low-income housing tax credit program. It's a cycle, an application cycle, a competitive cycle throughout the state for tax credits for two types of housing. Applications are typically due in August, and, um, hearings held around the state in December or November. And generally, projects are funded, they hear about that in December. So, we have several projects in Warrensburg, which as a community, you're fortunate to have, um, companies that have been successful in getting the credits. You have two projects off of, um, in the Hawthorne area, off Northern Hills Road, that Ken Hamilton's company has done, one on the north side, and then one on the west side of Basswood. The current project of apartments is not, it's a market rate project, it's not part of his, um, tax credit projects that he's done in the past. Then you also have the, um, Pathways Apartments that went in on the west side of Burkhardt, they're behind their office building, and behind what's now CBS Pharmacy. Um, that is a multifamily program, project, and the other two were senior housing program projects. All three of them were new construction, and all of them also came, well, and then you currently have the multifamily project of Magnolia, um, Garden Walk at Magnolia Ridge on Lot Seven of Hawthorne. That's also the same type of project. All of those came forward as new construction projects, uh, seeking support from the city, um, with letters of support and resolution of support from the city. This is the same type of program. This would be a multifamily program request through the state. And the only difference being, this is an existing project. These apartments that are out there now, uh, the pro, the request to the state is to put forward a project that would rehabilitate the buildings that are already built. So, it's not new construction, it's a rehab request. This project is being brought forward by Pete Ramsell, who's here this evening. He is with, uh, the head of HRM Services. This is the, a map in your packet that might be easiest to, uh, look at as we talk about the project. Um, Warrensburg Estates is at six oh two Spring Ridge Road. That's a one-story, two-building that's connected with one, um, hallway-type area. Um, that is one piece of the request for rehabilitation to the state. The other is known as Spring Ridge One and Two. On the map, those are the addresses of six nineteen, six twenty-five, and six twenty-seven West Clark Street. There are other buildings shown on the map. Two have already, uh, one has already been demolished and is gone. And two, if the program is funded, uh, would likely be demolished, um, as a part of this project. And so, Pete has provided a, an in-depth discussion of these properties and their current condition, and his plans for them and that area. Staff has reviewed it at a conceptual level, um, to be aware of what the zoning is and, and, um, the zoning requirements for it, such that they can meet those and feel comfortable that they can. So, the request this evening is a request by Pete to provide that typical resolution of support, and authorize the mayor and the city manager to provide letters of support, as is usually done if the resolution is passed. So, we'd be happy to answer questions about that. Um, and Pete certainly could go into great more detail about what he intends to do with the project if funded.
I'm adding any attempt to approve that area is definitely something that we should support, I mean, because that's.
Well, number one, it's never got that way.
Well, I agree with you.
I'm not sure who was taking care of these, but they weren't doing a very good job.
But I think if you, if, if we support this, give them a better, you know, hopefully give these families a better product to live in, and with a better product to live in, they take care of them better, and, you know.
So, the ownership would transfer with this?
Okay.
If the state funds the program, then Pete's group will take ownership.
Which, I don't think that's a bad thing, based on what the previous owners have done with the place.
Is it all right?
Please, please come forward, Pete, thank you.
Uh, Barbara's done a great job of explaining what we hope to do. Uh, it's an eyesore. It's a problem. Uh, probably most of you are aware. We didn't realize until we got there on the property just how bad it was. Uh, the current owner i- is a developer, and I've known for years and years and years. I'm the, uh, former executive director of the Missouri Housing Development Commission, and the tax credit program was my baby. And, uh, it's very disappointing to see what, uh, what happened at this property. Uh, the neighborhood doesn't deserve it. The good tenants that live there don't deserve it. The children certainly don't deserve it. And so, our goal would be, uh, to spend approximately three and a half million dollars and completely rehab the, the units. Uh, we're not taking out drywall, but we're going to replace roofs, siding, new windows, all the fixtures inside, lighting fixtures, uh, plumbing fixtures, everything will be, uh, like new when we finish. Uh, Rural Development reached out to us, and they said, we've got a real problem here, and we know we've got a, a problem. Uh, they know us, uh, I've worked with them for more years than I want to admit. And so, they said, would you take a look at it? We did. I was embarrassed, because once upon a time, uh, I probably helped fund some of it. Uh, but what's happened to the property is just an absolute eyesore and, and nuisance at this point. Uh, and I won't go into more detail on that, I probably shouldn't in public, but, uh, it's, it's a real problem. Uh, not only for the current owner, who is, basically has no money, he's not about to spend another dime on it, or they're not. Uh, we don't want it to go to a public auction, uh, because, uh, I've experienced that, and usually that means a slumlord is gonna pick it up, and, and, uh, it just continues to go downhill. Uh, if we're awarded these credits, uh, we will spend, like I said, three and a half million dollars. New ownership, new management, new rules, new regulations. We'll keep the good tenants, the bad tenants are gonna be gone. Uh, the problems are gonna be gone, and then we're going to manage it, because we're going to put, uh, approximately four and a half million dollars in equity into this, uh, property. And we wanna lo- own it for the long term. So, I think it's a win for the city. It's certainly a, a win for, uh, RD, uh, Rural Development, and, uh, they're very supportive of our efforts. This process to, uh, get awarded credits is very, very competitive, and your support is critical. Uh, so much so that I said to Barbara, uh, are you willing? Uh, I certainly need the resolution of support. Uh, there's a letter from the city manager, typically that accompanies that, and a letter from the mayor. But I said, Barbara, would you write a letter of passion? And I don't know how else to say it, because I feel pretty passionate about this. Uh, because I want MHDC to understand there's a real need here. Uh, there's a need for renovation, there's a need for just a wholesale redoing of the property. The neighborhoods deserve it. It's a beautiful, beautiful area. I mean, this is the eyesore. Uh, this is the problem. We clean up this eyesore and this problem, uh, that, that becomes a, a, a beautiful, uh, neighborhood again, which it, it needs to be. Beautiful subdivisions all around it. A couple of times I've been there, I've, I've had people stop and say, what are you doing? And, and I said, we're, we're thinking about taking this over, and they said, please, how quickly can you do it? Uh, you know, that was a couple of weeks ago, when the weeds were about this high, and nothing was going on, and it's not being maintained, so. I'll shut up. You, you get the point. Uh, but we really need your support. With your support, uh, we're gonna spend a lot of money, submit this application, and hopefully get it funded, and come back with good news, and we'll completely rehab it and take it over. Uh, there's two additional properties, you, you can see on your site plan. Uh, if, if we do what we propose, we will also buy those two additional properties, so we'll own everything. Take it over, uh, new ownership, new management, do it right for you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
So, you're going Spring Ridge and Warrensburg Heights then?
Yes, we're gonna do, uh, Warrensburg Estate and Spring Ridge One and Two. Uh, and then we have, uh, we will have control of Warrensburg Heights and Warrensburg Properties at that point. So, we'll control the whole area.
Control that whole block.
And eventually, we'll submit heights and properties as a tax credit application, and it'll be a, a year or two down the road before we can get that funded.
Right. Question I have for us, I'm always use, um, your project as a discussion point, cause I went and saw it yesterday. I tried to go out and meet, see things and meet people and those things, is, um.
You know I'm not exaggerating.
How to, well, I was, um, but it's, how do we put some, how do we put some teeth in the stuff that we know that it won't go back? I'm not saying your project will, but we have several places around town where we're just, we get abandoned, and we get stuff, and I, I do understand personal property rights, and I'm very conservative, but how do we keep this from happening again? Cause it does need a development.
Part of the problem here is that this, this property was fairly far gone by the time the city had adopted its property maintenance code.
Okay.
And so, now you have the tools to be more proactive that, that were not in place before, so that, that the property would not get into a state, uh, decline that this one had by the time those codes were adopted.
Cause I clearly want to support it personally, I mean.
Councilman, I make a point, uh, in policing, we call this a den of iniquity. And so, this is where criminal activity is centered. In Warrensburg, this is about where probably ninety percent of our back end was. Um, there's a couple of things that are fairly new here that I think would help as you're redeveloping. Um, I have offered other training in a program called Crime Free Multi-Housing. They work with landlords, the property managers to help screen tenants. And they also work on, uh, developing communities that are, are true communities, and there's a sense of ownership, even in a rental community. And so, I would encourage if, uh, as you get this going, if you wanna reach out, we can make that available to you. The second thing, crime prevention through environmental design, uh, as you're going through redeveloping the properties, there are things that you can build into the environment that will prevent criminal activity. Uh, the, a lot of them are, are low-cost options, uh, ways to make sure that you don't get that criminal element back in there. And so, as you go through, I'd love to, to dial up with you.
Absolutely.
Sit down and, and see how these programs can help you ensure that this won't be a den of iniquity once you get it.
We'll seek you out.
Thank you.
Given your previous role with MHDC, so I've dealt with this program in a couple of different states. I was always under the understanding that, given that this is tied to federal tax credits, that there was requirements for auditing and unannounced inspections to make sure that the property was being maintained for a period of thirty years. Is that not the same in Missouri?
It is.
Is MHDC doing those?
Uh, MHDC is doing it, and they're probably doing more of it on heights and properties than they are on the other properties. The other properties are, are RD and was funded thirty, over thirty years ago as an RD property. So, MHDC didn't have that portion of it. Uh, so, that, that happens to be Warrensburg Estates and, and Spring Ridge One and Two.
Oh, with, with the reinvestment would come underneath the authority of MHDC again, for another thirty years, it'd be monitored by MHDC.
I do have some of those in my office where every other year they inspect. And they'll quit paying if it isn't too much of a desarray, and even in that one year.
Right.
This year they're inspected, and next year they won't.
We will sell the tax credits, raise the equity, private equity, put in the project, and as I said, it'll be five, five point four million dollars. And that's our investment, and, uh, we will have, uh, again, not only new ownership, but new management. And we'll have rules and regulations, and, and we'll have, uh, requirements. I mean, there's nothing being done there. No one's being screened.
I have five hundred properties, so you have to look at them once in a while, but they're gonna end up like that.
Right, right.
It didn't just happen overnight.
Right. And it's, it's just not happening.
I'd love to see it.
But again, the Councilman Holmberg's concern about not letting this get to the same point that it is now, at least for thirty years, MHDC should be ensuring that that doesn't happen, because then they have the authority, given the federal programs, they participate in the company, and require that property to be sold to a more proactive owner, if they're not meeting the requirements. And then typically what happens is after a thirty-year period, it's time for some rehab, and they apply for funding again, and they kinda stay in the system. I don't know what happened at this property specifically, but obviously that didn't occur.
MHDC requires annual audited reports. They require a, a annual inspection that they do of the property, and we, I, I actually implemented a lot of that, so I know it well. We, we. We, we, uh, do not want, uh, you all concerned, and having issues, and having problems, and. The mayor calling the governor, or some of the other people that sit on the commission, uh, uh, that, that was just my rule and my hammer. Developer, either you take care of your property and run it right, or you're not gonna get another property, or another development. And, uh, it worked for years, and, uh, this just kind of slipped through the cracks, and. A large portion of it was RD and not MHDC, not tax credits, so some of those inspections that I'm describing haven't taken place, obviously.
Regardless, this is the best way to forward, and staff recommend approval of a letter of support.
I move to approve.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Thanks, Pete. All right, moving on to the two thousand nineteen annual sewer rate review.
Mayor, members of the City Council, in two thousand sixteen, HDR presented a five-year sewer rate, uh, schedule. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, because of revenue shortfalls, uh, an amendment to that schedule was, uh, presented. And it was passed by the council, and what that amendment did was, uh, increase the. Fixed rate instead of the volume rate, uh, of the charges. And the residential, for example, fixed rate went from nine dollars to eleven fifty in that amendment. Uh, then last year, in two thousand nineteen, we had a similar amendment that was proposed to the council. Uh, it was proposed an amendment of eleven fifty to thirteen dollars for the fixed rate portion. Of the, uh, residential sewer rate. Uh, that was, uh, the last part of a pretty extreme increase for the sewer rate. Uh, fixed portion. Um, then, so this year, what we have proposed is to kind of keep on that same track. Of the original five-year plan, and to increase the volume charges. Uh, the volume charges, it'll be a minimum, minimal increase, uh, from two dollars and seventy cents. Uh, for, uh, zero to two cubic feet, and it'll move to two dollars and seventy-two cents. And then for two cu- cubic feet and over, it'll go from five dollars and eleven cents to five dollars and sixty cents. Uh, the commercial volume charge will increase from four dollars and fifty-six cents to four dollars and eighty-eight cents. There are several projects that we have, um, here coming forward in the next few years. We'll have to do, uh, the SCADA and the, uh, the.
UV?
The UV, uh, portion of the, of the WPC. And, uh, they will have significant financial impact to the city. So, yeah, I think it would be in our best interest to stay on this schedule. Uh, we only have one more year on the sca- of this, uh, proposed sewer rate schedule. And then we'll look at it again and see what it is all, uh, to see if there's a different way we would need to increase rates, or if we. Need to stall for a year or two, but, uh, I think it would be good to stay on this current, uh, sewer rate schedule.
Are we currently setting aside money for those, those, uh, those projects?
We're, we're trying to, that's why we did the sewer rate, and we kept raising sewer rates, and then people become more efficient, more effective. And then we didn't gather the revenue that we needed, which is why we switched to changing the fixed rate. And because then everyone pays that, and we've had success with that. So the plan is to bring in enough revenue that we can set that money aside. And when we need to make those capital improvement project improvements, we have cash on hand to be able to do that. We've made some significant progress over the last year or two, in, in beginning to bring in more revenues than expenses than we can do that. But we've been behind on that for several years, and, and doing that.
Yeah, we, we had a time period from when the city took over the building. Um, there's about a two-year period where it was, uh, suggested that we increase sewer rates. But they were not increased for two years, and, uh, I mean, and it really hurt us, it set us back a lot. So I think it's pretty important for us to stay on this schedule.
Are, are the, I'm sorry, the, the projects, uh, are they, like, mandated to take an effect by a certain time? Or is it something that we have a little bit of wiggle room and play on?
UV system, we have a system out there that, uh.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand anything you said.
Well, the, uh, disinfection that we do out there is, uh, uh, the components for that, uh, were sewage components, but sewage.
And they don't make it anymore, right?
So we're in a, uh, situation where we have to change two different setups, instead of using the horizontal, we use a vertical. Uh, setup in there, so, you know, that was kind of the, the front end of, uh, putting in UV systems and. Uh, wastewater systems throughout the state.
If I remember correctly, the, one of the problems is that for a long time, you, we could scavenge off of other cities and stuff that we're updating, but now. It's just become.
Well, we were, we were updating first before some of the others, and then the company, I mean, lack of ability to get them published. We had to buy them, uh, through another vendor, which makes it quite high. I mean, yearly, it's costing sixty thousand dollars per plant to replace, uh, UV bulbs, uh, that do the work in there. So, you know, it's quite expensive to run, to run those units. Uh, if we upgrade, we can get into, uh, a better price component on that. The other, uh, the SBR system, we've been continuously upgrading it, because, uh, it was proprietary. So you only buy parts from one vendor, uh, which makes it very costly for us, so we're working it up for you now. And the other side of it, you know, you gotta think down the road of what we're gonna be involved with, you know, as a community grow, we're gonna have to increase the capacity of these plants. Uh, we've got additional SBR, uh, units to, um, not SBR, but, uh, your, uh, processing. Yes, SBR, I'll get it right, processing units, uh, for your wastewater, so your plants are gonna have to enlarge. At some point, uh, right around the floor, uh, as soon as DNR and NEPA finally decide. Uh, how best to go about, uh, putting the regulations in place. We have nutrient reduction, and we also have phosphate reduction, we have to put that in. So, uh, there's quite a few things out there that continuously change, that you're mandated to do.
So what is, I mean, to an average, to the, the average consumer, what's that incre- what's this increase look like, about a buck something?
Uh, it'll, it'll be pretty minimum to an average consumer, uh.
Your commercial ones are gonna be the ones that are forty dollars more than what they're used to. You know, we only may as, as people, two dollars, but when you're looking at these commercial people, it's a lot.
Yeah, it's about this thirty, thirty-two cents increase on the volume charge for commercial. So, yeah, they, they probably will be paying the, the lion's share of the increase.
So be prepared for some phone calls. Just saying.
Well, if you remember, if we looked at that, then we were trying to help those, the people who are on fixed income.
Yeah, ever since I got on the council, almost six years ago, so we talked about trying not to increase that, but it catches up.
So, uh, zero to two, uh, once it hit the, hits the, uh, two dollars seventy-two cents. It'll, it'll stay there for the remainder, well, it's only one more year, but it'll stay at that rate.
That's my experience with changing the usage charge, is that, uh, people find ways to save.
Yeah.
Water and not use as much, so then they don't have to pay it. So this is a, you use it, you pay for it, you don't use it, you don't pay for it.
Right.
Versus the fixed charge, which is if you get a bill from us, you're paying that increase regardless of how much you use. Um, so, um, is not to say everyone's gonna be able to find more efficient means, uh, to reduce their sewer bill. But, uh, several of them will.
So I just move to approve?
Well, we're asking for a recommendation, what you want to do, so we can prepare the proper ordinances to bring forward that, uh, you would like to do.
Yeah, so the, the next piece of this will be, uh, uh, a public hearing. And that one, that would be tentatively scheduled for, uh, July twenty-second. And then we would, uh, move forward with the reamending, uh, ordinance.
You.
Go ahead.
You wouldn't be here for the July twenty-second?
I won't have to be here for the July twenty-second meeting.
Is something like that, would we want to push it back for, to the next meeting?
I don't think that's critical for me to be here, I mean, you have.
There'll be plenty of public.
Slim and Matthew, um, which is why we brought it forward to you guys, I mean, if you guys politically aren't interested in doing that. Then staff can look at other alternatives.
I think that, I'm never ecstatic about increases in rates, but, you know, logically, it has to happen, because the cost of operating those places. Increase every single year too, so.
I mean, and, and really, you're looking at a two-cent increase for zero to, uh, two cubic feet. Um.
But I think we determined that zero to two pe- that zero to two group is like a one percent, two percent of our population, so, you know.
And then, uh, uh, a forty-nine cent increase for the over two, and that's in just the volume charge. So, this, this is not really an increase that will be paid by residential customers.
I think you've been, I think I can see it right here, it didn't last. I thought the previous year, we, the residential side took a lot of the burden.
Yes, it did.
And then we, we eased off on the commercial side, so I mean.
We jumped from eleven fifty on residential to three, thirteen dollars.
Right. So I mean.
When you got your stalls and your inner system, your dollar tree, and that, they're the ones that are really gonna happen.
Right. But then they just, they, they just pass that cost on to us in another manner, so. You still, same people still pay for it in the end.
I mean, we did, we did increase commercial last year too, but their fixed, their, uh, volume charges stayed the same throughout this whole program. Throughout the whole, uh, schedule, so.
Well, if we don't do these rates, where are we gonna get the money to cover farther down the line? With, uh, s- sales tax going down? I mean, it, it looks like we either do a small increase now or a bigger increase later.
At some point, you're gonna have to adjust rates.
Yep.
And my experience has been, is you have a choice to either adjust to slightly incrementally each year. Or wait till you absolutely need it, and then you have a big, huge jump.
Yep.
To be able to have the money to pay the, the debts and the infrastructure costs that you need. I, um, my experience has always been, is it's easier, more palatable to do the incremental increases than it is to do one big jump.
And you've got bond covenants that, that require that you set your rates at a sufficient amount for system operations, so it's, at some point, it becomes not optional.
Yeah.
Yep, I would say move forward.
The two thousand nineteen proposed rate schedule?
Do we need to do a vote on this?
Can we do a vote?
Staff to prepare the proper ordinances.
Yeah, your actual vote on it can't happen until after you get your hearing.
Well, I was saying, do we need to do a vote to?
This is a recommendation to tell them what we want them to do.
Gotcha.
All right, moving on to approval of Warrensburg Economic Coalition Partnership Plan.
Mayor, you want to go silent, or you want me to do that one?
It's up to you.
So, we've been working, uh, if you remember, uh, we've had an organization that was created many years ago called the Economic Coordinating Board. Uh, I believe that was created by a former mayor and, and council, and got some people together to help. Get some communication going, get everyone on the same page, that's working on economic development in the community. And, and improve communication, that kind of languished a little bit, and so here for about the last, oh, probably a year and a half. We've been doing some introspection and, and discussion, and basically rebirthing of the organization. It has now been redefined as the Warrensburg Economic Coalition. It has partners from, uh, all the big players, uh, within the community, uh, school district, county. Um, university, city, Main Street, Chamber, uh, WCVB, uh, the base. Uh, all of those major players in here, and it's meant to kind of now be one voice on behalf of the community towards our legislators. So if they have a bill or something that they're trying to determine how they want to vote on, and, and how that impacts Warrensburg. They have one place they can go and get multiples of perspectives from everybody. And, uh, also meant to be kind of the, uh, the lobbying arm for the community. With the new, uh, legislative rules regarding lobbyists and those types of things. Uh, but, uh, one of the things that we requested as we make up this new board is to go back to each of our respective organizations and have. Uh, the partnership plan approved by each of the different organizations. So that's what's, uh, in front of you this evening, this is the partnership plan that we've been working on for a year and a half. And how we're moving forward, and, and what we're doing, and how, and who's at the table. So, um, I think it's given this group new energy, new focus. And thus will, will result in better positive effects for our community moving forward with regards to economic development. I would recommend approval, but, uh, Casey can add anything, he feels I missed, he's the current, um, president, chairman of the group as well.
I would echo everything that Harold said, it's all of the major players, uh, in our community, all coming together. Uh, to kind of make some tough decisions on what's gonna do the greatest good for our community. Whenever you're, you're on the outside, looking into Warrensburg, and you see, uh, what's going on. Uh, just from a, a more global perspective, you don't necessarily know what was Main Street, and what was Chamber, and what was City, and what was. Uh, you know, University, and so, uh, by us all coming together, rather than each of the dozen or so entities. Having their own three agenda items that they're pushing throughout the community, and with their legislators, and, and, uh, them being bombarded with. Fifty, uh, items, and they can't, uh, get any of them done. Or should we all come together and decide what's the three to five major items that's best for all of us collectively? Uh, and I think it's gonna be a great way for us to have everyone at the table, keep everyone informed, as well as. Uh, make decisions on what's best from a global perspective, uh, for our community, so. Uh, this partnership plan is, has, there's been great effort put into this, uh, strategic planning sessions. Um, as well as, uh, lots of breakout groups and such, uh, that are trying to do. Uh, good work to do research, as well as, um, get all the parties at the table, and then we'll be moving forward. But this is just making, confirming that all of those entities, uh, are on the same page and agree with the direction. Uh, that the, uh, that the board is now going, and, uh, you know, with the new structure, uh, to make sure that we have full support. And so this is just kind of full disclosure, so that all, all of the boards, so the Chamber and Main Street, and, and the WCVB. All of them are doing exactly what we're doing, which is bringing this plan, uh, to their boards and bodies. Uh, so that they can vote in support, and all be included in the conversation, and know who their representatives are gonna be at the table. Good things happening, a lot of work to get to this point, but this is just the, the beginning. Uh, next is actually doing the good work for the community, so I would be in, in full support of this, and would entertain a motion if nobody has any questions.
I saw move.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. Anybody back there, Ray? Nope, nobody? All right, moving on, there's no mayoral appointments this evening. Miscellaneous matters from the mayor and/or city council. Have they got anything they'd like to bring forward?
Carthago de Linda Est.
What's that?
Is it Carthago de Linda Est?
Oh, it's Latin, don't worry about it. Um, congratulations to Mr. Holmberg, uh, for his new, his new role.
Well, thank you.
Uh, let's go ahead and, city manager report.
Uh, not a whole lot to report, I hope everyone had a safe, uh, Fourth of July, given the amount of rain. I don't think there was very many fires, so that was, other nature helped us out on that one, I think. Dampered a few, uh, community events and activities, but, um, uh, just, uh, let council know. Uh, we're starting to get geared up for that, uh, economic development conference period again. So Chicago in October, uh, Fort Worth, Texas in January, so we'll be having some conversations with you guys as far as. Who would like to go in representation of the council. Uh, also, we're discussing budget, um, again, we've been trying to trim, trim money out, so it might be worth. Again, we've been trying to trim, trim money out, so it might be worth having a conversation on how many representatives we send and pay for from the city for the Chicago event. That's our most expensive one. A lot of that is in hotel fees. So anticipate some conversation between council and staff here in the near future as we get geared up and, and ready for that here in the near future. I know last year, Casey and Suzanne from the Chamber flew up that morning and flew back that night. I'm sure it was a long day, but it seemed to be fairly cost efficient and saved us a lot of money and not having to pay for some pretty expensive hotel rooms in downtown Chicago. So that might be something that maybe we want to consider this year and try to cut costs. We don't ship our booth up anymore. We drive it in a car and I drive it up. That saves us a lot of money too, so I'll do that as well. But again, how many staff and how many council we send to go. We need to find a better balance there than we've had in previous years. And that's either four people fly up that same day and come back that same day or not as many people go and then they stay a night. We'll talk about that some more in the future. We're getting geared up for that and getting ready for that. I can't think of anything else to provide any updates on. At this time, I'd encourage you to go by and see the new WCVB visitor center. I'm going to say a little bit of thunder from Marcy. But I had an opportunity to go back, go visit it last week, and she's done a great job of getting it set up. And I think it was great. It'll be a great welcoming center for our community coming forward. So if you haven't had a chance to stop in, please do so and give our thanks to Marcy for the great work she's done with that. I don't have anything else.
Matthew?
Combined sales and used tax revenue was up twenty percent last month. We had a total increase in revenue of about twelve point four percent. And that's increased from the last June to this June. So we're about on par this year for overall budget. Next council meeting, we'll present the, the budget photo contest winner. We do have a winner now. We had about thirty pictures this year, well, a little, a little less than thirty, but it's the most photos we've received from contests this year. So, uh.
Barden?
I have nothing additional.
What's that?
Oh, we had some flooding, some washouts with the rain this past weekend. I presume it was called flooding areas around thirty-three years of working in the city and on projects. I've never seen it rain so much. With that roundabout project, they worked on the west side of the roadway and they've come along pretty well with that. They're tearing up, first work has gone back in very well on that. We actually think they might pick up a little bit of time on the project, which is plus the rain. They had it compacted forward. Rain didn't really affect them that much, so we felt good about that. We got word today that our asphalt contractors are going to come in and do our overlay. Over raining around the state and delays that they've encountered about a year until the last week of July, first week of August, which is a portion of time in the world, as we all know. Especially since a large portion of this baby project is holding a street and park. So I would advise city council to go out and invest in earplugs and be ready. We're not, we're not real happy about it. We're in contact and trying to get that expedited, but.
What's the, what's the timeframe on the roundabout?
Uh, I would, there's no way I would give you a deadline on that right now. I'm going to go out on all that.
We're still about two weeks behind from the last update.
Yeah, we just, we'll see what takes place. Can't control the weather and.
Very aware of it.
Me, too, maybe.
You gotta, you gotta remember my office is in relation to other places. So I'm going to ask at every council meeting, because he's going to ask me.
I guess just a couple. Thank you, Harold, for your kind comments regarding the visitor center. We are ecstatic regarding our location and the visitor center. The visitor center relocation would not have been possible without the WCVB, WCVB board and city council and city staff support. This move was, was, you say it's a few blocks, but holy cow. Only a couple dumpster jobs ahead. It would have been possible without Slim and Brian, Matthew and Claude and Carl and Harold and so many people came together and we're very, very grateful that was possible. Please stop by. We are excited to show it off. You're going to get a tour and an earful, but please bear with me. It'll, it'll tie down a little bit. We are going to be doing a ribbon cutting in an open house. We're working on some availability of our board members to see, but we'll get that scheduled really soon. On Thursday, I will be out of the visitor center, but it will be open. Our communication already ruled have it open for the visitors to come in. We have been invited, the WCVB has been invited by the Missouri Convention and Tourism to present at the PR summit. They have a PR summit in the fall, or in the summer and then the fall. This is the first time we've been invited to attend. They're going to give everyone that's been invited five minutes to talk about what they've been doing this past year and where they'll be going in the few, next upcoming year. We've got quite a bit to talk about, and so they've told me several times, five minutes. So we're really excited about that opportunity. So, thank you.
Jill, anything from Main Street?
Just thanks to Martin Rec and the city for all the support and help for our Fourth of July. I pray for the kiddos. It did not rain for our event. It actually rained, it started drizzling right there. So it was perfect to get everybody to kind of head back to their vehicles. And we had to do staff members right up at Main Street, a part-time office assistant. She started last week, Jamie DeBeckers.
Suzanne, anything from the chamber?
Just want to remind everyone that the LeWos Local Community Sandwork Sale is this Friday and Saturday. There's about fifteen businesses that are participating. And I do want to say thank you very much to Marcy and Jill Main Street and the Visitors Bureau. We work in partnership with the freshman orientation. There's ten sessions every year, and we each take some time to be able to welcome freshman students and their parents to our community.
Anything, Rich?
Um, just a little bit of an update. We did have success in filling some positions. I know some have been a paper and those types of things, but then again, there's their duties last weekend in four different positions, at the animal shelter manager position, the human resources assistant, evidence tech in the police department, as well as a new firefighter ENT. So we're making good progress in, in catching up in, in those areas.
Sophie Winger is coming back to the police department. She's going to start next Monday. So if you guys are around around ten o'clock, I think, that we're doing Sunday. We're not doing.
Ten fifteen.
Yeah.
I think I have a bid opening at ten, so.
Oh, she doesn't get another painting, so it's not as big of a deal, but it's still a big deal. So if you're around, say, all about ten fifteen, we're going to square in at Cindy's office. And then I will be out of town next week in Jeff City attending the advanced section of the Crime Prevention with Environmental Design. And I want to get back, I'll talk to Harold about scheduling some time to do a session with you guys on it, tell you what it's all about and how we're going to be able to use it.
What day you said it was, for ten fifteen?
Ten fifteen.
Sophie's swearing in.
Next Monday.
Oh, Monday, I'm sorry.
Next Monday.
This Sunday, I will be in O Sage Beach at the Missouri Municipal Attorneys Annual Conference. I'm one of three attorneys that have been asked to participate in one of the sessions as a panel discussion on the evolving issues with land use and medical marijuana. So we'll be sharing and bringing in ideas and I'll be happy to bring back any information that I'm able to garner down there.
No, anything? Good. Do we need to go to close session?
No, I have no need for a close session.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.
There they are.